Back online. Good evening. I want to call the February 19th, 2019 meeting of the County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us. Let's begin our meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join me in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To reply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin our meeting this evening, I would like to ask for a moment of silence, for prayer or reflection, to give thanks for all of the people who dedicate themselves to public service. There are many people who work hard every day to meet our community's needs, solve problems, and help make this a better place to live. Their work often goes without thanks and acknowledgement, but they do it anyway because they believe in public service. So let's please hold a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you very much. Also, before we begin, I'd like to announce that there is parking validation for use of the county parking deck and bus passes for folks who are attending this meeting. Anyone who's, who would like to get validation, please see one of the officers on your way out and they'll give you a valid, a validation which is valid only for today. Let me read the ethics reminder to the Board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official action, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Also, does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at this meeting. All right, we come to the consent agenda. Any questions about any item on the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
As so move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Okay, the first item up under presentations is regarding the NC 211 Asheville Call Center. And David Bailey, I believe, is with, hey David, is here to, and Marla Brown also will join him in presenting this item.
Good afternoon. We have a brief PowerPoint we're going to share with you. If Matt could bring that up. So good afternoon Chairman Newman and Commissioners. Again, I'm David Bailey, the CEO of United Way of Asheville-Bunkham County. Joining me is Marla Brown, who's the Director of our Call Center here in Asheville. She's been with us since the summer of 2013. She has prior 211 experience in Lake Martin United Way in Alabama, so she brings lots of expertise to the 211 service in our community. So last week was February 11th and it's National 211 Day, and we operate the 211 in the, for our county and the region. So we, we thought it'd be a good time to update you, the county, and the residents of, of our community about the work of the 211 Call Center specifically. Bunkham County's been a key stakeholder almost from the beginning, and so we've had a great partnership for, for nearly forty, for over 30 years with this. Next week, we'll be doing a similar presentation to this City of Asheville, another partner in this. So I'm going to take you, take a few minutes and just give you a few highlights about our history, our evolution, and then Marla's going to tell you the details of our operations and answer any hard questions that you have. So as you can see on the first slide, so in 1970, the Volunteer Service Bureau of United Way was started. Two years later, 1972, the Volunteer Service Bureau started an information referral for Health and Human Services as part of their work, again, all under the umbrella of, oh, it's not on? Oh, thank you. Thank you. So Volunteer Service Bureau, Bureau, under the umbrella of United Way, then started a 24 hours, seven days a week information referral for Health and Human Services. In 1978, it separated and became a separate information referral line and started our partnership then with, with HelpMate, helping them with after-hours calls. In the early 1980, our partnership with the county began, and you began supporting our work. In 1989, and what some people remember that, we became First Call for Help, best known for 252 H E L P, 2524357, and started our partnership with, with Our Voice, which remains today. The next iteration was after Hurricane Floyd hit North Carolina, the Governor Hunt gave 211 to United Ways across the state to implement. We already had an information referral, so we transformed our seven-digit call to 211 and became 211 of WNC in 2001, and also became accredited by the Association of Information Referral Services at the time, which is a high standard of certification for call centers across the country. Those of you here in 2004, you remember our response to Francis and Ivan. That was, no pun intended, a high watermark for the organization. We got our word out and did great work with community partners across the state. And in 2015, we, we partnered, we changed our name to NC 211 Asheville, and we partnered with NC 211 Call Center in Durham to cover all 100 counties in Western North Carolina. We currently operate this out of our office at South French Broad Avenue, cover Bunkham County and the 15 contiguous counties in Western North Carolina.
Great, thank you, David.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having us. Again, I'm Marla Brown. I'm the 211 Director for United Way Asheville-Bunkham. And what I'd like to do is just give you a brief overview of what 211 is and does and the work we're doing in Bunkham County. So as I take you through this presentation, if you have questions, please stop me and ask. So for those who may not know, and for refresher for those of us that do, 211 is a Health and Human Service referral line. We're available 24/7, 365, and just about any language. We're also free and confidential. Confidential unless someone reports they're going to hurt themselves, someone else, or they're reporting adult or child abuse. Then we have mandatory reporting, as most social service organizations do. As David mentioned, we're also available across 100% of North Carolina, operated by two call centers, our sister center in Durham, and then the call center that I have the privilege of directing in Asheville. The call center in Asheville is operated by United Way, as David mentioned, and we cover Bunkham and the rest of Western North Carolina, the 15 counties surrounding Bunkham, Mitchell-Yanse, all the way over. We also are a three-time accredited center by AERS, the Alliance of Information and Referral Systems, which is kind of a big deal in our industry. So anyone that's gone through accreditation knows that it's a very painful, expensive process, which we've done for three years, meaning we've been accredited for 15 years. We're in the process of our fourth accreditation, and things are going really well with that. So hopefully, we can come back and visit with you when we get that finalized. So the next two slides, what I would like to do is take you through what a 211 call sounds like. And what this is going to do is illustrate the high level of training of our specialists and what they do on a daily basis. So the first slide that you see, the first bullet, is listen to callers. This is a trained skill set. So in our call center, we have, of course, wonderful, nice, caring people, but all of our specialists have at least a bachelor's degree in social science, then they go through our training. Once they've been with us for 18 months, we require that they get their individual certificate, certification, again, through AERS. So this is an example that I like to share. This call happened maybe a year, year and a half ago. One of our specialists answered the phone, "Thank you for calling 211. This is Amanda. How can I help you?" And the caller said, "Yeah, I'd like information on food pantries. I haven't eaten in about three days." So of course, Amanda could have said, "Wow, that sounds really terrible. I'd like to offer you food pantry information." But what she did, the first bullet, listen to caller, she paused and said, "Do you mind if I ask why you haven't eaten in three days?" The woman shared, six months ago, she lost her job, which means she lost her health insurance, she was hospitalized. When she was discharged, she could not afford her medication to buy food. That's why she hadn't eaten in three days. One question just identified five needs, right? So statistically speaking, it takes seven phone calls to meet one need. That's 35 phone calls. This woman is not making 35 phone calls. And she's not eating for three days. That high level of stress, we know that's not something she's going to do. So what Amanda did is she did it for her. She, the third bullet down advocacy, we are required for a certain percentage of our calls to be advocacy calls. So Amanda made the 35 phone calls for her, right? Then she's keeping in touch with, with Ms. Smith. "Hey, Ms. Smith, by the way, do you have any adult children that are checking on you? Do you have any neighbors? Do you have transportation?" We're trying to find out the whole picture of what's happening with this woman so we can get her needs met. So after Amanda made these series of phone calls, she followed up with the woman. You'll see the last bullet. Again, that is something per our accreditation that we are required to do. So she followed up. "Hey, did your son come pick you up to go get that prescription assistance? How's everything going?" Just checking in with her, right? We have wonderful people that work for us. Just great. This next slide, this is very specific to Bunkham County. This is our call volume, our, our top five needs in order for 2018. Part of our wonderful partnership, as David mentioned, back from, what, 80s, 90s with HelpMate and Our Voice, we take their after-hours calls for HelpMate, Our Voice, APS, CPS, here for Bunkham County, and some Health Department calls as well. We serve as the backup from 5:00 PM till the next morning, five days a week, 24 hours Saturday and Sunday, and holidays. And you can see we have a very strong partnership. That is our top call in Bunkham County to support the work of HelpMate, Our Voice, and APS and CPS. Our second biggest request, food pantries, that's not a surprise for anybody who works in social services. And then you can see by the third and fourth bullet, that's quite a reflection about what we know is happening in our community, right? We know we have a housing crisis, and it's reflected in our top needs. And you can see too, including in our top 10 needs, there again, we have home rental assistance, general legal aid, that can be landlord-tenant dispute information, or a number of other issues. And also included in our top 10 is crisis intervention. That could be suicide prevention, it could be someone looking for domestic violence shelter, and anything you can think of that would fit underneath that category. As you can also see, as I was preparing for this presentation, and I was reviewing the top strategic priorities of the community, I was like, wow, there's a lot of overlap there from the calls that we're seeing and what the county has identified as their top strategic priorities. This, again, I know this is a lot of fun to look at. What this is showing you, we just looked at the needs, this shows the top referrals. So the needs being housing, food, APS, CPS, HelpMate, and Our Voice, this is showing who we're referring those needs to. Okay, so in Bunkham County, we handled about 22,000, almost 22,000 unique calls last year. Those are calls that are coming into us, we're handling. Now, as far as total calls handled, which is our advocacy, our follow-up, contacting on-call, then that number is probably closer to 32,000. That's the highest call volume in the state for 211. We have a very strong utilization rate in Western North Carolina for 211 compared to the rest of the state. And again, it comes down to those partnerships that we've built over the years. We also, available to Bunkham County, have about 27 agencies, programs that we can offer our callers. And again, you can see, as reflected in the needs, who we're referring to obviously reflects why they're calling. I'm going to pause here. Does anybody have any questions before we continue? I'm throwing a lot of information at you. We're good? So we talked about how 211 helps callers, but I also want to share how we help our service providers. We are a companion piece to their work. So our role is to be comprehensive, which means we need to know a little bit about everything. The 2,700 agencies and programs in our database are all specialized. Our biggest, second biggest utilizer of 211 are service providers. That means that we can have someone call, "Hey, I think I've done everything for my client, but will you brainstorm with me? Make sure that I've figured out everything I can for them?" We love working with our service providers because we're going to do the same thing. We're going to call them, "I'm advocating for this client. I'm not sure if this is an appropriate referral for your organization. What do you think?" So we, we really are a strong partner with all of our service providers in our database. The second bullet, how we have information to help community decision-makers. The next slide, I'm going to show you a super cool tool that if you love data, you're going to love this a lot, and it's going to explain that second bullet visually. The third one, as what we do during normal day-to-day operations, we also do during times of disaster. So, gosh, was that just this year, Hurricane Florence? We assisted our sister center in the response to Hurricane Florence. 211 is now the governor's line for emergency operations. Were written into their plan. We also assisted with Hurricane Matthew. During both of those times, our call volume at least tripled. So we're handling our regular 211 calls, then disaster-specific calls, which could be a mobile food pantry, temporary shelter, very similar to what we handle on a day-to-day basis. Here is the super cool tool I promised you. This is 211counts.org. You do not need a username or password to access this. Oh, look, it's magic. So here you see 211counts.org, yes, and you would click on North Carolina or another state if you're interested. What this is going to show you is a dashboard of needs as recent as yesterday. So this means our specialists that are handling calls right now, you can see what they handled calls about after midnight tonight. If you'll scroll to the top max, you can see where it says, "Display as percentage or count." Will you click on count? And if you scroll up just a fuzz, the drop box where it says "All," these are all of the ways you can view data. So you can mimic a school district by clicking on zip codes. You could look at just one particular county. You could look at a congressional district. If you'll click on Bunkham, thank you. And the date where it says "Last 365," if you'll click that, then you can pick any kind of date you want. "Last 30," sounds great. So as you can see the left, these are the top needs. If you click on one of the blue boxes, it breaks down the green boxes on the right a little bit more, so you can see what's underneath each one of those categories. Food, yep, food pantries, number one request 30 days ago. Mm-hmm. If you'll click on mental health and addictions, yes, as we all know, we're seeing, we, from our standpoint, we're seeing mental, crisis intervention and suicide climbing, right, which tends to go hand-in-hand with what we know is happening in our region with the opioid crisis. And we also see rent payment assistance, utility bill payment assistance. All of it is tied in together to the opioid crisis, right, from a number of anecdotal stories I could give you. Healthcare, if you'll click on that one. So what we see from our callers, most of the referrals, their resources we have avail, available are for low to moderate income individuals. So you can see health insurance is 19. That's people calling in to request health insurance. Most of our callers know where to buy health insurance. They still can't afford it. So that is why medical providers, meaning I still need a doctor, is the top referral almost always in this category, no matter the date range, no matter the county that I look at in our area. It's telling. So this is a tool definitely as a social barometer about what's happening. We're seeing it in our callers. These are not outbound calls. What do you think the top needs are in our community? This is people calling us and asking us for help in these. And if you scroll down also, it ranks a little bit depending on your category. It can give you, you know, what was happening this time last year in that category, what's happening now, and then Bunkham County, again, the number one county for healthcare needs, not just in our region, that's the state. And you can see the other high-ranking counties are also from our region. Also, if you click on the map to however you're breaking down the data, it gives you the unemployment rate compared to the state average, high school rate, and a few other choice things there, along with population. This information you can download as a PDF. You could email it to yourself. There's a number of options you can use there. So we do have service providers that use this information for grant purposes. It's right there at your fingertips. And of course, if you needed more detailed information, we can offer that at the call center level. So that is what I have for you this afternoon, the short and sweet of it. Are there any questions? Thank you very much again for allowing us to present this to you.
Thank you very much. It's very, very informative and very interesting tools. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we've got a third quarter financial report, and Don Warren will present this item.
Good evening. How was everybody tonight?
Good.
Good. It's actually going to be Jennifer and I. We're going to tag-team this for you. Can we start the presentation? I've got a few PowerPoints for you. All right. So you all have the financial reports that have a lot more detail than what we're going to cover tonight. This is going to be a more of a high-level overview. We're going to talk a little bit about the budget to actual summary, general fund, solid waste fund. We'll talk a little bit about the capital projects, and then Jennifer will cover projections. So just to give you a quick glimpse, if we look at the general fund, typically, we'd be 50% at this point of the year. We're at 47%. Last year, we were at 45%. So we're right where we need to be, actually. We're doing all right. So, general fund, budget to actual. This is a breakdown by function. So general government, excuse me, general government, public safety, economic development, human services, cultural, education, and so on. The expenditures by function really shows you where we are and how we budget. So if you were to look at general government and what does that make up, that includes things like finance, budget, county manager, elected officials, those sort of things. The public safety obviously includes sheriff and those, those areas. If you look at the budget to actual, so for general government, 45.6 million is what we had budgeted. Year-to-date, we have 19.2. So we're at 42% in that category. Overall, for the whole general fund, 323 million is what is budgeted. We're at 151.4 million actual, and that's as of December 31st. And that puts us at about 46.9%. We also broke it down by category, so you can see what the breakout is by salaries, operating discretion, operating nondiscretionary, contingency. Now, the operating discretionary funds, those are items that departments have control over, so that's their office supplies, travel, training, those sorts of things. The nondiscretionary are items that are charged from other departments to various departments. So that's your fuel, that's your copy of rentals, insurance, that sort of thing. Then you have program support. Those are expenditures that are mostly related to HHS. The contingencies are for items that, you know, may come up throughout the year that we need to budget, that other, other departments have a need or the Board has a need. And then capital outlays are expenditures or equipment that are related mostly to general services or IT that don't fall into the category of a major capital purchase. Solid waste, we also broke that down. And we did this one only by category because if we did it by function, it would only be one function, which is an enterprise. It's the same categories as the general fund as far as salaries and operating and that sort of thing. You can see the solid waste fund. The total for that is 9.8 million. Actual expenditures to date were at 2.988 million. Now, when we start talking about the capital projects and that sort of thing, we have, in the capital budgets, we have a total appropriation for the county capital projects of 11.76 million. And then we had actual expenditures to date of 463, to date being 1231, 463,000. Now, we're going to have a lot more when next quarter rolls around because those projects are just ramping up. So when we give you the next quarterly report, you will see a lot more information. And the school capital projects, we appropriated for fiscal year 19, 7.95 million, and then actual expenditures, we don't have any yet, but we will again next quarter because those projects are starting to take off. And then, I'll be happy to answer. Any questions? If you want any more detail on anything? Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Jennifer, and she can talk about some of the projections that we're looking at for the year end.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is an initial general fund projection report for our fiscal year 2019 based on the through December 2018 budget to actual amounts. A reminder that a projection is based upon assumptions that exist at a point in time. So given that, please note that we are still very early in the fiscal year and that we still have six months of activity remaining from the end of December, and that projections are, are subject to change. This year, we ga, engaged in a different process for the creation of our projection method. Projections were developed by budget and performance management staff together. We worked collaboratively and in communication with departments to inform the projections for both expenditures and revenues. So that's important to note that that has been a new process for us this year. Well, I apologize, general fund.
There it is.
Let me get on the right slide for you. So I'd like to begin with the review of our revenues. Again, a reminder that the amended budget as of December for both revenues and expenditures is 323 million and $1,422. Depicted on this slide is revenue by type. The area chart in the background is the budgeted amount. The lower portion of the navy blue bar is the actual revenues that we've received through December, and then the polka-dotted blue pattern is the projected portion of revenue we anticipate to receive. Total anticipated revenue without factoring in an appropriated, appropriated fund balance amount is anticipated to be 310 million, 844,561 dollars. Some highlights related to revenues is that we do anticipate 100% of the ad valorem budgeted revenue to be received. We are projecting the receipt of additional sales tax revenue over the budgeted amount. For intergovernmental revenues, we are projected to be, to receive lower than budgeted amounts. I'll make one note about intergovernmental, intergovernmental revenues, particularly for Health and Human Services. When we are looking at revenues, know that they are frequently tied to expenditure dollars. So if you do not spend expenditure dollars, you will, potentially will only receive a portion or none of the associated revenue. And I'll speak to that. You will see a correlating anticipated underspending of intergovernmental-related HHS expenditures. We, and I'll-
Question.
Yes. then you have a related response for the revenue side. So either a decrease or receiving the amount of revenue that was planned when you spend the program dollars.
So the net expense to the county is not as high as a lot of times we see when it relates to HHS?
That's correct. So for a program, for instance, if you have expenditure dollars of 100,000, and you anticipate 500, or 500, or 50,000 of that, then it's only a 50,000 net county cost.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. So moving on to the other areas for revenue by type, I'll just make a note that the sale of assets and investment earnings miscellaneous revenue category, we are projecting to yield a higher amount than budgeted. And all other revenue categories are based on current trends and anticipated revenues. Any questions on revenues?
Yeah, one other comment. And I thought of this earlier, but the sale of assets, it's been a while since we maybe had a report on, you know, at one time, we were looking at properties that we owned, and do we need to sell those? And it's been, it's really been a while since we've had an update on any of those properties or assets that we were...
We can, we can look to include and get that to you. What I'll note additionally about the sale of assets is that I do believe that also includes gov deals.
Yeah.
So some of those dollars are associated with that.
I understand. That just thought come to my mind about the others, and I just thought I'd put it out there.
Okay. Great. All right. So if no further questions around revenues, we'll move on to expenditures. So what I'll point out, and Don represented also the budget to actuals by function. If you'll remember that, when we moved to adopt the budget and the budget ordinance is adopted, we do that by function. So we are depicting the information tonight similarly, so that you can look at that correlated to how we adopt the budget. Again, the area chart in the background is the budgeted amount. Lower portion of the navy blue bar represents actual spending through December, and the polka dotted blue is the projected portion of the expenses that we anticipate through June 30th. Our total estimated spending with the projection is 317 million, 350,320. The projection does reflect an estimated underspending of approximately 5.6 million dollars of expenditures, which represents 1.7% of the budgeted amount. And this underspending is estimated to occur in the areas of salary and benefits, operating, and program support dollars across all county departments or functions. Debt service, education, and other financing sources and uses are all projected to fully spend. It's important to note, while expenditures are reflecting the overall trend to underspend, it's important to remember, as we reviewed the information for intergovernmental revenues earlier, that some expenditures are directly tied to revenue dollars. So if we don't spend the money, we additionally don't receive the revenue or only a portion of it. The total projection outlook must consider the relationship and balance of all revenues and expenditures. So our first projection estimates an approximate use of 6.6 million of our appropriated fund balance. And again, a reminder, we're really early in the year, and that is a projection. Details are included in the financial report that has been posted online with the agenda and is available for the public to review, and I believe Don commented on that as well. Any questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. And thank you, Don. Great job. Okay. We have no public hearings, so the next item on the agenda is the county manager's report, and George Wood is not with us. I'll turn it over to Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. As you know, the personnel ordinance requires that each year, we look to determine what the annual cost of living adjustment should be for all regular, full-time and part-time employees, and that's based on the calendar year as of December 31st. For this year, that calculation is 1.77%, so all regular, full-time and part-time employees will receive a 1.77% cost of living adjustment effective April 1, and that will show in their paychecks on April 26th. Want to share that information with you, so you know what's happening?
All right.
Thank you.
And just one question on that. Jim, in terms of the metrics that we track, looking at cost of living changes, that's the 1.77%, that's really, how dialed in is that for Buncombe County in particular, as opposed to state or national cost of living information?
The ordinance provides that we have to use the Consumer Price Index, Urban Wage Earners and Clerical Workers USC average table. So it's not specific to Buncombe County, it's specific to that particular group across the country.
Interesting. Do we know if there's a way to kind of localize it more, or is that just kind of the, does anybody study us locally enough to kind of have a reliable number, or is that urban average the best, you know, probably the best data that makes sense to track against?
I can't answer that for sure, but my, just experience in working with the tables before is that that's about as specific as you're going to get. We tried to use the table that best represents the workforce for which it's applicable. I'm not aware of one that goes any more specific, like to state or county region, that's based on the Consumer Price Index.
Okay.
We'll investigate that and see, and report back to you.
Thanks. All right. Thank you for the update. Okay, we don't have any items under old business, so the first item under new business is consideration of a resolution to extend the appointment of George Wood as interim county manager for three days.
Well, I will go out on a limb and move support of that.
Second. All right, there's a motion and a second, and the purpose of this is to cover the gap from the time that George Wood is originally planning to end his tenure and the start of Admiral Pender's tenure as the new manager for a couple of days early next month. There's a motion and a second. Any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The next item is consideration of the appointment of a deputy finance officer, and Don Warren is back to tee us up on this one.
Hello again. Yeah, so Dustin Clark, dang, our deputy finance officer has left the county to pursue other aspirations. As a result, we need to appoint a new deputy finance officer. That is not something that staff can do, the board has to do that, that's stipulated in Chapter 159, General Statutes. I recommended that Jennifer Chilton do that. She and I are in two different departments, which would mean the likelihood of us both being gone at the same time is very low, and would allow coverage for the county. So if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer that.
Is this job permanent for Jennifer?
Is it permanent?
Well, not permanent, but are we looking for anyone else to replace, or is she just going to take the job?
Well, she's just going to fill in as the deputy finance officer, which means when it comes down to pre-audits on contracts, she would be able to sign those in my absence.
That's fine.
And yes, it would be permanent until she decides to leave.
All right. Is there a motion?
So...
There's a motion and a second. Any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Great, thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to authorize the chairman and clerk to execute an eight-year agreement on capital funding for AB Tech for the, from the Article 46 sales tax funds. And Michael Frew will start us off.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'll kick this one off. A couple weeks ago, George Wood and I went over to the college and met with the trustees on a presentation of a proposed MOU between Buncombe County and the Board of Trustees for the Asheville-Buncombe Technical Community College. Now, this has been a long time in the making, based on research that George has done with finance and budgeting staff and working on the history, and it's been a problem he recognized as soon as he got appointed as interim manager and started working on a resolution of this issue. Much, much of the issue, just by way of background, as I've explained in the past, comes from, honestly, frankly, a level of distrust that's been created between this board and the trustees, largely through the actions of a former county official. At this time, what I can kick off with is the memorandum of understanding in its current draft. I worked with a college attorney, Chris Campbell, to make sure that this motion and our resolution and the memorandum of understanding met with the terms and conditions of the vote by the trustee board. That vote was nine to four, and just to make sure, before I get into the details of the MOU, that board approved the MOU conditioned upon the agreement of that this Board of Commissioners jointly request the local delegation have the MOU adopted by the General Assembly as a local act, and further expressly state that all revenue in excess of expenditures identified in the county manager's proposal must flow to the Article 46 fund balance, and said fund balance can only be expended by the county on capital expenditures for the college. So this proposal, this resolution, and this memorandum would accomplish that. The details of the memorandum are as follows, and I'll just summarize this or read through it as the board is pleasured. The county will not transfer to its general fund out of the quarter sales tax revenues more than $5 million over each of the next five, eight years, rather. We do know from history that in this current fiscal year we end, 6,500,000 got transferred from that Article 46 fund to the county's general fund for operating funds, which went back to the college. This would restrict that to no more than $5 million for each of the next eight years. That's a cap. It could be lower, but it can't be more. Currently, approximately $25 million in deferred maintenance projects have been identified at the college. I don't have a lot of details for those, but there's, PFA Architects has worked with Greg Israel, who is a former county employee, general services director, has been working directly with the college and the architects to identify those deferred maintenance needs. Those groups have identified $25 million in projects. Their architects recommend, including in that $25 million over eight years, that we include a construction inflation rate of 5.54% per year for budgeting purposes. So you do the math, that starts with $3,125,000 for the first year, escalating that for each of the next eight years. That 5.5% would mean that in the eighth year, the county would transfer $4,557,951 for those deferred maintenance needs out of the sales tax revenue. The parties recognize that funds should be readily available for any unexpected capital needs, and recommendation of Architects and Greg Israel and his staff, they recommended that the fund balance in the quarter cent sales tax revenue not go below $2 million, except in the case of unexpected capital maintenance emergencies. If a giant chiller went on, out on top of a building, that might be a million dollars. The county would have to make up for that, but they, if it went below that $2 million, but through normal operating expenses, it would not go below that amount, so it'd be held in reserve. I will read Section 5. It's the important part of this as far as the conditions upon which the trustees would like to see this MOU approved. So should the Board of Trustees and the County Board of Commissioners agree at any time to additional maintenance and repair work at the college, to college real property and/or new building construction for the college, the county shall either pay cash out of the quarter cent sales tax fund balance, or it shall pay the debt service for such future college capital expenditures out of the same fund. In any case, and as indicated, the county will not allow that fund balance to go below the $2 million as identified above. If necessary, the county will decrease the amount it transfer to the general fund as identified above, that's the $5 million per year. So if necessary, the county would appropriate more of its ad valorem taxes, if necessary, to make up the difference, but that $5 million would go down, but not below the $2 million floor. The parties understand and agree that during the term of this MOU, the quarter cent sales tax shall be applied to the debt service schedule as set forth in the exhibit, and that's in your materials, and to the county's general fund to defray the cost of operations identified above as the $5 million maximum per year. The remaining balance of the quarter cent sales tax shall be held in the sales tax fund balance, and the full amount shall be restricted for future college capital expenditures only. Said restriction on the use of the sales tax fund balance accruing during the term of this MOU shall survive the termination of the MOU. So the Board of Commissioners and the trustees would be agreeing that this would stay in place after these eight years are up, but in the meantime, the requirement is that they work together to get the local delegation to make this MOU become law, at least for eight years. In order to accomplish any construction and deferred maintenance needs at the college, pursuant to this MOU, the memorandum of understanding dated October 2017 remains in full force and effect. That agreement from 2017 essentially appointed the college president to serve as its representative for the trustees, to work with Buncombe County, and to make sure that the trustees' wishes were kept for selecting and contracting with project architects, to engage in design review, to evaluate bids for construction of projects, to award final construction projects or contracts, direct that a pre-construction conference be held, direct the management of the construction phase, approve pay applications and make any payments as required, approve or deny any change orders, engage in dispute resolution as may be required, and make a final acceptance of any project at closeout. So that cooperation between the college, through its president, and the county's representative remains in place. The initial term of this MOU begins as of the date of full execution and terminated at the end of 2027, or June 30th, 2027, unless sooner modified or terminated by the mutual agreement of the parties. The parties agree to meet and discuss terms and conditions of a renewal term of this MOU to commence in FY 2028. Parties understand and agree that there will be a continuous need for the funding capital and operations of the college. The last three provisions are just that this is the entire agreement of the parties, any invalid provisions have no effect on the others, and the parties that sign will have the authority of their boards. Our resolution goes through the same material, authorizes the chairman or the county manager or either of them to execute the memorandum of understanding, and also commits this board to request jointly with the Board of Trustees of Asheville-Buncombe County Technical Community College that the local delegation have this memorandum of understanding adopted by the General Assembly as a local act. I will try to answer any questions you have at this time.
I have one. Do you know when the, when this was voted on, do you know what the expectations were as far as the amount of money that it would generate? Was there any numbers discussed?
Historically?
Yeah.
Or...
and also commits this board to request jointly with the Board of Trustees of Asheville-Buncombe County Technical Community College that the local delegation have this memorandum of understanding adopted by the General Assembly as a local act. I will try to answer any questions you have at this time.
I have one. Do you know when the, when this was voted on? Do you know what the expectations were as far as the amount of money that it would generate? Was there any numbers discussed?
Historically, or?
I think, I don't, there's, I've been reminded today that there was some discussion back in 2011 or '12 that, of what the expected revenue stream would be. I do know from looking at numbers, and I don't have it handy, that the revenue stream from the sales tax has been a good bit higher than what was expected. I know that level of spendings has changed, and I think has increased to more than what was expected, but I think the bottom line to your question is, is that this fund, I believe, has generated quite a bit more revenue than originally anticipated.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a few questions. We will take public comment on this as well. So, these are more kind of about the plan as opposed to the legal agreement. So, Michael, I don't know if you're, I'm not sure who might be the best person to direct them to, but, you know, just a few, a few comments and thoughts. You know, the plan that's been developed identifies about $25 million of deferred maintenance needs on the campus, and I think focusing on maintenance of the existing buildings is, is right to prioritize, so I like that, I like that general focus. Is there, and PFA, PFA is the, that's the architectural group that was retained to look at the needs on the campus, right? So, is it possible to get a, what have, what have they prepared that actually talks about how that $25 million would be invested if this, if this approach is approved? I've seen some, you know, just a few pages of some very high-level information, but is, I guess I'd like to have a better understanding of how detailed the plan is for exactly what would be done with that $25 million, which actually turns out to be more like $30 million over the eight years, since it's assuming about 6% per year inflation costs on the projects?
I really don't have any further detail than that one attachment we've seen that shows the PFA in, in phases over the next eight years to spend that $25 million. I believe that the, the detail may be limited to the anticipated expense. They want to do it in phases, they want to meet this cash outflow beginning at $3,125,000 and increasing as described by 5.54% per year. So I think they've identified what needs to be done, but not the order in which it needs to occur, but I could be wrong.
Mr. Newman? Looking, looking at this as a trustee and as a commissioner, where we're at now, we're building a fund, we'll be spending $4 million instead of a million and a half per year on the buildings, so. If you're spending a million and a half, we don't, we're actually adding over $12 million plus the, the 5% he's talking about to the buildings. We're, if we don't do this, we, we take the million and a half that we're basically, the county's going to absorb away from it again.
So, I'm not, I'm not debating that there's a general need for it, but I guess my question is how, do we, to what level of detail do we know how that $25 million will be spent specifically? Or is it just more of a, this is an estimated cost per square foot of what we think the needs will be out there for budgetary purposes?
The first, the first buildings that get fixed are trying to bring twos up to fours, and they're bringing, and one and halves up, you know, to fours too. So, that's the first ones that, you know, in these committee meetings that quite a few of us have been in, and Mr. Israel's brought them in to bring the numbers.
Is, is there a more detailed report from PFA, or is it really just that summary document is what they've produced at this point?
I don't have that. My understanding is that originally PFA did an estimate and then went back and did a much more thorough, detailed examination of all the buildings to determine what the maintenance and repair needs were.
Okay. So, so could we get a copy of that?
Sure.
Great.
So I think one of, one of the, one of the issues with the, the older buildings was, and some of you went over there and visited, was the design, the exterior design, water infiltration, you know, and some things like that that was, 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 you know, investigated and wanted to be fixed, and I think that's part of the, I think that was part of the initial, some of the initial concern, you know, was, was, was that. But we've, I don't think we've seen that report, but we've seen, we've seen an overview.
I mean, it was like a couple of pages with bullet points. So, I mean, and, you know, related to that, I guess my questions would be, some of the questions I have would be, so this sort of outlines an eight-year plan to invest in deferred maintenance at AB Tech as kind of a core focus, and I'm all for that, again, wanting to see more details of exactly what that would entail, but, you know, I'm curious how the decision was arrived at to do that over an eight-year period? You know, when I hear that there's this deferred maintenance, it sounds, it sounds, that sounds like something we should be getting on, you know, as promptly as we can. There's $25, $25 million of need identified, but because we spread it out over eight years, we're actually going to spend $30 million on that because costs are going to go up with inflation. So, is there someone who could talk about the reason why we're choosing to address deferred maintenance over eight years rather than over a shorter period of time? You know, looking at the pro forma, it looks like there's additional money there that we could be, you know, we could, we could tackle this on a shorter timeframe if we wanted to.
In, in speaking with Greg, Mr. Israel and his team, I think it's as simple as they can't do it all at once, or they don't want to have to try to do it all at once because they want to do it in a measured and responsible, professional manner. Now, part of the reason for also going over eight years is that the design of, of the attachment shows from the spreadsheet that the, that the idea is to grow the fund balance as much as possible over eight years, that there's a nice big pot at the end, possibly as much as $19.3 million. So if the new building is needed then, or if other needs are identified along the way through the proposed committee, that those could be paid for either with cash or borrowing and paying for the bond prices or for the debt service out of this revenue. Now, I know from talking with the, Mr. Wood, that he, he tried hard to make sure that he was going to give a conservative estimate of how to proceed. Now, as Mr. Belcher asked earlier, when this tax was passed in 2011 and went to effect, I believe in early 2012, it has grown much faster than anticipated. The historical information that has been gathered that it's grown about at over 7% per year. This estimate is just to show growth at only 5% to be conservative, not to try to overshoot. Also, the original idea was that this project timeline and tax might sunset in 2029. He designed the spreadsheet to end in 2027, again, to have a conservative estimate.
I have just a couple more comments or maybe questions. You know, the, in, in, I think having, having, the fact that this is generating more money than originally anticipated is great. That's great for, you know, provides more resources. I will say, one of the things, there's a lot about the plan I like. I like the focus on deferred maintenance. I think that's something that just in general, we, you know, we don't put enough prioritization on with public facilities and schools, and I think, I think having that as the focus is, is great. Just the idea of building more money in the fund balance account, to me, is not particularly compelling because I think there could be lots of, you know, we didn't pass this tax just to kind of build up funds in an account, we want to invest it in, in, in projects. So just having, there's already about $11 million sitting in the fund balance now, and just growing that to a much bigger number, you know, I don't want to spend money just to spend money, but I'd really want to make sure if there are projects that are, that need to be implemented, that we have a good process to, to execute on, on those. Are there other questions or comments from other commissioners at this time? We will take public comment on this in just a minute.
I have a question, and it's unfortunate that Mr. Wood isn't here to give us a little bit more of a background of how he came to some of these decisions. We know that somewhere between $15 and $16 million was not spent for AB Tech purposes. That should have been close to a half million on county salaries. Was any of that taken into consideration and researched as this proposal was being developed to help right those wrongs for AB Tech and those funds not being used as intended?
I'm not sure how best to answer that. I mean, this, this, this report and this plan can only go forward, forward. I mean, it's, it does correct, I think, some of the wrongs in that it does conservatively estimate the growth of this and make sure that the fund balance comes back to a healthy amount, but I don't think it, it wasn't intended to directly address any wrongs that were done, except to make it right over time, to make it work properly.
I do believe, just to point out, I do believe that one of the things in efforts to address some of that, right the wrongs, was to do a very comprehensive study of the facilities, to determine what were the necessary maintenance and repairs that needed to be made in those buildings. And to sort of echo what Mr. Frue said, my understanding from Greg Israel was, in terms of doing the deferred maintenance, if you had $25 million, there were considerations, one, about just the ability to do all of that at one time, also being mindful that you're doing maintenance and repair on buildings that are being actively and currently used, so to make sure that you stagger that, so that you're not impacting the life of students and the life of the, the, the college in trying to do that, and trying to make sure that you do it in as judiciously a manner as possible. I think certainly if this board said, look at that in a shorter timeframe, we can go back to both PFA and to the process to see and work with the college to see if that's something that we can accommodate in a shorter timeframe. But I think those were the, the main points that they were looking at and trying to make sure that they accomplished everything and to do it in a way that was as least intrusive as possible to the life of the college.
So I'll just make, I'm going to make a couple more comments, and then Jasmine, you can go next. You know, I think there's a couple of things that, for me, are important that we try to accomplish as we're moving this ahead. The, when this referendum was held back in 2012, voters were told that there would be $130 million invested in AB Tech capital needs. $129 million and change, right? I'm just, I'm rounding it up a little bit. So, the, so I think it's important that we make sure we have a, a plan to make sure that those funds are invested for those purposes over this planning horizon. The, the sales tax will generate enough revenue to do that, the funds are there to do it. I like the fact that the, the updated MOU does have language that talks about the fact that the additional money that would accumulate in the fund balance would have to be spent on that purpose, so it couldn't be spent on something else. But it doesn't provide assurance on when that would happen. I mean, it could, if the, if, if the Board of Commissioners and the AB Tech trustees are not on the same page about how to invest them, they could theoretically just be held and spent even later in the future. So I think, I think making sure there's a good process so that those funds will be invested over this planning horizon is important. The other thing I would say is that, following up on the comments that Commissioner Edwards just made, is that, you know, there have been things that have been mishandled with these funds, on the Article 46 funds, that are, that are pretty, pretty, you know, have been clearly identified in terms of paying salaries with some of these funds that should not have been done. And frankly, the county, you know, came in and basically insisted on certain projects that AB Tech didn't really see as priorities for construction on the campus, such as the, the $15 million parking facility. So, to me, I, I would be supportive of not only assuring that there's a plan to invest $130 million in AB Tech capital, I think that there should be a commitment to invest more than that, in light of the fact that some of the funds were spent on things that AB Tech really didn't request, and, and frankly, are not, let me finish, and then you can have your turn. Frankly, were, were poor decisions. This parking deck that was built is vacant the vast majority of the time, it's never fully utilized and won't be. So, so I would be, I would be supportive of, of going above that number so that we make sure that there isn't, there's enough funding there to invest in the, the real priorities of AB Tech. Jasmine, and then Mike.
Just some general comments, and really look forward to hearing from folks who are here tonight. One is just that I've really looked forward to this discussion. I've had a chance to speak with people who are part of the AB Tech administration, a lot of conversations in our three-by-three meetings, but this is the first time we've had a chance to have a conversation as a full board in public and with the community. So, so my instinct would be that we really give this the time it deserves to get to a plan that fully honors the original commitment that was made to voters and to the campus. I feel like what's in front of us moves the needle in a positive way in a lot of, in a lot of different areas, and I appreciate the work that's gone into it. But I, but I don't want to see us rush to a vote on this if there's, if there are ways we can further finesse this, to, to really try to right wrongs, but also to restore trust in this relationship. And I think to do what, I understood to be at the, at the, the, the heart of the intention around this campaign originally, which was to ensure that AB Tech has the resources to be a critical public institution in our community that's absolutely tethered into educating folks, into workforce development, into creating opportunities for folks who might not otherwise have them. I, in my own life, my mom was, raised me as a single mom and went to nursing school at a community college, and that opened doors for her, and it opened doors for me. And, you know, I know in a very firsthand way how critical community colleges are in our community. So I, this is, you know, that's kind of personal, and this is more high-level, but, but that's kind of the way I'm approaching this conversation, is as an important, important dialogue and discussion tonight. I hope an airing of ideas that, and I hope an opportunity to hear from folks, perhaps folks who are part of the AB Tech community, about perspectives on this. A couple other things, just to, that will sort of, that are guide stars for me. One is honoring promises that were made to voters. I think that's critical. That's not just critical in terms of the details of it, but it's part of how we rebuild trust, which is something that we need to do on every front right now, is if, if things were done unethically, or in some cases, in, in the broad scope of things, I'm not talking about this specifically, but illegally, we have to not just acknowledge that, but take steps to make those things right, and part of that is rebuilding trust. And establishing and putting in place, I think, a, a new and different kind of foundation for the relationship between the county and AB Tech moving forward. So, I look forward to where this conversation will take us. I personally don't feel in a rush to vote on something tonight, if taking some more time would get us to a, a better solution. And those are just some sort of general thoughts to tee off where I'm coming from in the conversation.
I wholeheartedly agree with Commissioner Jasmine Beach-Ferraro, I'm going to say her whole name, her comments. In terms of restoring trust, I mean, the other piece of that is the accountability that we owe AB Tech Community College, but Buncombe County taxpayers as well. And I think really being thorough and taking our time through this discussion allows us to really start to rebuild that trust and the accountability back to the voters. I, I have some concerns about rushing this as well, because in all due respect, you know, Mr. Wood has done a great job of putting a, a beginning proposal forward for us, but he doesn't have any accountability in seeing this through. Our new county manager will be here in less than two weeks, and I think it's only fair to her that we include her in this process, because she's going to be the one working with us so closely to ensure that we really are following it and that we're being accountable to AB Tech and to Buncombe County. So I wholeheartedly agree about slowing the process down so that we can truly focus on trust and accountability.
Mike? Okay, go ahead.
Before I bring the PowerPoint up, when Mr. Wood came to Buncombe County a few months ago, eight months ago, I think it was, I brought this issue to him and tell him, we got to fix this somehow or another, because Wanda had robbed AB Tech, point blank. I called it a slush fund that she went after. Brandy Newman says in, in an article, he feels like they could utilize some of the money in the county. Got it right here. Changed his mind a little bit, but I'm working, I didn't vote for the budget, or for the AB Tech deal, but it got voted in by 500 votes. We're talking $129 million. I made a PowerPoint back when Wanda Green was part of it, basically, and that's what's getting ready to come up. But I'm gonna use the parts of it that turns out to where the numbers work. And, okay, if you'll bring the PowerPoint up, please. So, hide and seek, that's the game. Go ahead. And we can skip some of this. Go ahead. And look at the numbers. There's some numbers that I want to look at. Victoria, all that. But if you look down at the bottom, we approved in 2013 and I was on the board, $83,872,000. We spent $53,866,000. So that basically left us $30 million. So remember the 83, remember the 53, and there'll be one more number I want you to remember. Move, step it up. Change screens, okay. We build a parking deck, you're right, Brownie. That was not put on the agenda. And we build a multipurpose building for seven and a half million. And so that come to a total of $22 million, 22 and a half million. So that basically left the county with $7 million, $500,000, basically part of the budget. We still in the green. Move again, please. So, but I have a sheet here, and I showed it to Don, wherever he went, that there was a $5.747 million major maintenance part put into it. So that 5.7 and that 7.5, I want you to remember those numbers. On it, please. Just, this is some of the old thing, let's do the math, you know, and there's the 5.7. We were gonna be in debt with the $27 million building that Ms. Green was gonna put forward over the 83 million. So let's just start moving out of this and get to the real numbers. Keep going. That was the art building she wanted, that we canceled. So let's keep going. We would owe 36 million if, if that doll came into effect. Thirty-five percent of it, they were hidden, you know, as kept from the commissioners. Keep going. Well, Creighton Billings Building for, that shed around the side of that building is $50,000. Couldn't believe it. Said it's 72,000, but they forgot to put the brick on it. Keep going. Here we have some numbers. There's $83 million approved in the budget. So now, Mr. Wood and the staff have put together, we're gonna have a $19,321,000 fund balance. It's not gonna stay locked down. We discussed that over there. It's been discussed. If it has to be used, it can be. If we have to go to a bank and borrow money instead of going through another thing, that we can actually go build a college, or another building. But right now, they don't need a building. So it can build, and if we, we run into something on one of the other buildings, it can be drawn from it with, with no big deal. It, it can end up with nothing at the upper end. But then you look, it's gonna be $30,423,000. So that, we ended up, and that's 33,616,869. I think that's above 129. But you figure 2028 into it, we're not into 29. That's another $4 million. So now we're at $137 million. But let's move down. The next deal is, I said, if you remember the number, 7.5 million. There it is. I'm deducting that from the 83 million. So that gives us 76,366, but then we add the 19 million to it, we add the 30 million to it, that gives us 126,104,000. But you add another $4 million to it for that, to 28, we're still above $130 million. But then I go down and remember the $5 million that was into the major maintenance. I have it on piece of paper here. Don's seen it, right, Don? Okay. I add that to the 76 million. So that brings us back to 82 million, not quite 83. But then you add the 19 million and the 30 million capital to it, again, that brings you to 131,808. Add $4 million to that, that's $136 million. So we're way above what we're trying to look for. My issue is, it's been so long. It's been so bad. I'm not worried about extra dollars right now, I'm worried about fixing what they have. And the more we put it off, you know, this gives us more money to fix the buildings and they can utilize it in areas. They can change stuff, they can do different things with the process of the money. So vote, voting on it tonight is totally worth it. There is no way this goes under the, or, you know, can be canceled. We owe money till 2000, you brought, you got it from Don, we all got it. We owe money to, to pay this off until 2034 and 35. So how could you sunset something that's, that's not there? All I'm saying is, I want to put this forward, I want to put it to bed. George Wood had X amount of time to work here. He stepped up for AB Tech. He went with me and met with the Board of, the trustees at AB Tech, the Executive Committee. He went and spoke to all of them. It was a nine-to-four vote. But the fact is, you know, that's just the way it is. But I've got one more thing to show you. Bring it up. There's the referendum. If somebody could show me AB Tech on it, that'd be fine. The county, they could not do it, they couldn't put it in the referendum for AB Tech because it truthfully wasn't legal. They had to do it, it's quarter cent sales tax for Buncombe County. Now, I'm here to try to get this money to make it work for AB Tech. There's a lot of people here from AB Tech. And the fact is, I want to vote on it tonight, I want it passed tonight, and I want these, I want it settled down so that we can get the things done over there. That's all I'm asking. I'm the only one that's done anything on this. I brought every bit of what Wanda did to this board. That, I showed them this PowerPoint, but I used the PowerPoint for a simple thing. Wanda Green paid for a whole lot of stuff out of there. No, there was no county employees paid $16 million. That money went to AB Tech. All right? That's, they're not county employees. They work for a different source. County just supports money to them. And we're trying to give a million and a half dollars back and try to do more than that if we can. But, you know, if we keep doing what we're doing, it's gonna be a while before it ever happens. But I want to thank you for the time. There's the numbers. If anybody wants to go against them, go for it. That's, that's a two-and-a-half-year-old slide. And adding these numbers to it, it still comes up above whatever the, the number is, 1.2, 129 million. So all I'm asking is for a vote tonight to give AB Tech what it needs. And being a trustee over there, it's been hard to work both sides. But their side over there is a nine-to-four vote. And I appreciate all the votes, and I, and I appreciate anybody that voted against it, that's okay too. Because I vote against stuff up here, I hope it's okay. Y'all vote against stuff and I hope it's okay. But I want to thank you for the time. I want to thank the staff for helping me get this PowerPoint up. And simplest thing, no number under $130 million.
All right.
Can I clarify my statement, please?
Sure.
I did not state that 16 million was spent on salaries, about a half, 400 to a half million was spent on salaries, but there was somewhere around 15 million that was transferred and not used on capital projects. I just want to clarify that.
And I'd like to clarify, just, just some kind of, some of the top-line numbers, Mr. Warren. So, so my understanding is that there's been an, over $80 million invested to date. By the end of this year, we expect it to be right around $85 million in terms of funds that have been invested in capital needs at AB Tech since the referendum has been approved. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's actual expenditures, that's correct.
And then the, the plan that's been developed, contemplates about $25 million of costs, but with a almost 6% escalator. It's about $30 million that would be guaranteed for additional maintenance funding over the next eight years after this year.
Correct.
So, so if we've, if we will have invested about 85 million this fiscal year, and then we invest an additional 30, that's about 115 million. So it's about 15 million more to get to that 129, 130 million dollar number that was, a very specific number that was talked about in the campaign. And we do believe, again, we don't know exactly what the economy's gonna do, but using some reasonable assumptions, we do think that the sales tax would generate more than 15 million dollars of additional funds over that period of time, consistent with the plan that would still have 5 million going to operating. It would still generate more than 15 million of additional dollars, is our forecast.
That is correct.
Okay.
It actually generates 113 million. If you, if I'm, correct me if I'm looking at this.
I don't do math in public.
That's one of the reasons we hired you, is that, that wit right there. But, but the, the total revenues are approximately 163 million during that period.
For actual sales tax generated, yes.
Yes.
We're talking two different things, though. Commissioner, Chairman Newman is talking expenditures, you're talking sales tax receipts.
Okay.
So the pledge, from my understanding, the pledge is expenditures towards AB Tech capital. And then it was later amended to be AB Tech, AB Tech capital and maintenance. That's my understanding. So if you want to talk revenue, yes, we will generate a, a lot of revenue. A portion of that will also go to debt service to pay off items like that. So if we want to just focus on the expenditure piece, that would probably be the best thing to do.
Okay. So I would like to make one last comment, and then let's, let's take public comment if there's, unless another commissioner wants to comment before we do that, then they'll come back to us. But, you know, I think the questions before us, part of it is just, you know, it's just the, the financial, you know, how much money is gonna be assured for capital funding at AB Tech over the next eight years.
Right.
That's one question. I think the other question that's important is to talk about, you know, what's gonna be the process for making decisions around how additional funds are allocated for capital needs over this period of time and, and beyond. Because I think we do need to work to create a healthy collaborative relationship between AB Tech and Buncombe County to, to work on these ongoing issues over, over time. You know, one, one model for doing that is one that's, we're already using in Buncombe County for specifically something very similar to this, which is funding for school capital projects for Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County Schools. You know, when I first got elected to the Board along with several other folks who came in at the same time, you know, there were different, there were different school projects that, that we were supportive of and we advocated for and we, you know, cajoled our colleagues and tried to rally support for and things like that. And a lot of great projects happened that way. But later on, I think, you know, we really came up with what's been a great process, which is creating this joint commission between Buncombe County and the Asheville City Schools and the Buncombe County School System. I see one of our great school board members out here, Pat Bryant, who served on this commission. So we created a joint commission with representatives from the school system, representatives from the county, as well as other community members, to look at how to allocate, because there's dedicated sales tax monies for those schools too. So we looked at how to program those funds over time. Our staff have done a great job informing the work of that committee, looking at, you know, how much funding is available. And the city schools and the county schools come in and present what they see as the list of priorities for their, you know, for their districts each year, prioritize them, and then there's never enough money to fund them all, of course. But there's, you know, Commissioner Belcher's on there now, I've served on there. But it's a very, it's just a very data-driven collaborative process to figure out how to invest those funds. So my hope is that regardless of where we come down exactly on the, the funds that are, are gonna be guaranteed, I hope we can, I mean, I think that would be a great model for working between the county and AB Tech on the programming of these funds going forward. Again, you know, for the, for the detailed plans that have already been identified around maintenance, which I'd like to see, you know, some of that may have already been done. But there's gonna be a lot of additional funding generated here, and I think we need a collaborative approach to work with AB Tech on how it'll be, how it'll be invested. I don't think it should just be the county telling AB Tech, hey, here's the plans and go do them. I think we should be encouraging them to, you know, think about their programming needs and coming up with great capital plans to, to match those. So, any other comments before we go to public?
I got a quick comment, and I, I do agree with the part of what Chairman Newman's saying about the school commission, and that, that, that has been, that has been a good model on that, you know, we should have that type of discussion with, with AB Tech. I also like the fact that we're, we have a plan that is being presented, that was, the discussion, you know, was, has been taken to AB Tech, to their board, they've looked at it, now it comes back to us. I do take a little offense to, since Mr. Wood is not here, to make any, any direct response towards him and him not, you know, about him and him not be able, be able to defend himself. I don't think that's appropriate. But the first meeting that I attended, my first meeting, Buncombe County, in the consent agenda, was an $83 million budget ordinance for AB Tech. I didn't know what a budget ordinance was, and it was in the consent agenda. But we don't, it, business is not done that way anymore in Buncombe County. It can't be done that way in Buncombe County. I don't think anybody at AB Tech would want it to be done that way. I think, full disclosure, out here having this great conversation is very good. I'd also be a little careful challenging Commissioner Friar's numbers, because even amongst all the red and the green and the, and the, and the black and the white there, he tends to be pretty close to some of the, some of those numbers. But I like a plan, I like moving forward and, and I, I got two questions real quick for Mr. Frew, and then I'll hush. Is, is there, is there any, any building project, a building project, would this prevent consideration on any building project for AB Tech?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. The other question is, that can we, can we access fund balance with a, a vote of the board if necessary?
Yes.
Can we?
For the school?
For the school. Can we provide additional money on top of this with board approval with this existing plan?
Yes. I mean, this is separate from this board's responsibilities to the community college during the budget process and how much you decide, and your discretion is, is necessary for their capital and operational needs. That's a separate, separate.
We are mandated to meet that need.
Yes, that's a separate need.
Okay. That's all I got, thanks.
All right, well, let's go ahead and take public comment. I know there has not been a motion made yet, but I anticipate there will be one or more. So let's go ahead and we'll invite public comment on this issue. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment? Mr. Dennis King, Dr. King, thank you for being with us, great to see you. And for folks who are gonna be providing public comment, we've got three minutes, and please share your name and where you're from. Thank you.
Dennis King, and I'm with AB Tech. First of all, I want to thank you all for the projects which have been completed thus far. far. I think that it's incredibly important. When, when we went out to the public with this bond referendum, I remember talking about taking AB Tech to the next level. You've got a wonderful community college, of which you ought to be very proud, but it's not great. There are problems that we have had over the years, and the money that the quarter cent sales tax was to give us was money that would take us to that next level. And you did that when you gave us our allied health building. We tore down an inadequate building, one in which we had our physical, I beg your pardon, our pharmacy technology program in one little room, and you gave us a beautiful building, which is, as far as I can tell, state of the art. We want to continue that kind of progress to the next level. Now, you've, we've identified twenty-five million dollars worth of projects which need to be taken care of, roofs that are leaking, that need to be fixed, and things of that nature. And so, I'm satisfied that the maintenance is one of our top priorities. The, the need for a new building will come, and it will come soon, if you want to do what I just said, which is take us from good to great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'd like your idea about the school capital commission, because just listening to this, I remember when we had the quarter cent sales tax, and we all thought that the money was going to go to capital, and I remember discussions later, people in here were saying that you can't invest, put all that money in capital without having a reserve for maintenance. And I'm not sure where that got lost in the discussion, but we ended up diverting stuff into the general fund. And I remember at one point, the former president of AB Tech, he was not a happy camper because Wanda Green came in and wanted to take over the project. And, you know, if you keep changing plans, as much as we seem to be doing with this money that was supposed to go to AB Tech for capital projects, it's no longer a plan. You know, it's, to me, just sitting back there, it feels more like chaos. You know, if, if I were responsible for building and maintaining buildings at AB Tech, I would want something more certain, rather than thinking, well, you know, why should I invest the time and the money into doing this right, when the commissioners could just come up with another, another idea next week and totally change the budget? And so, I, I mean, I really think that whatever we do, it should give some degree of certainty to the people who have to plan.
All right, thank you. All right. Anybody else? All right, I'm gonna bring it back to the commission. So, let me, let me ask a clarifying question on the motion. So, there's a resolution as well as an MOU. Michael Frue, is it, is it okay to have a motion to approve the resolution and the MOU, or should we have separate motions for each of those?
I'm reading this as an approval of the resolution and the MOU as one, except a separate motion for the commitment to work with the AB Tech trustees to get local delegation cooperation and make this local act.
So, that would be a separate motion if it were to be made?
I think so, yes.
Okay. So, Commissioner, that's, so your motion is to approve the resolution and the MOU?
Yes, please.
So, where does that?
And, and, I'm sorry, the second was from Commissioner Presley?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, where is the, and I know I'm looking, looking at it, but the, the attachment for the, for the plan, where does it reference that in the, in the resolution or the MOU? Mr. Frue?
There's an Exhibit A. Exhibit A.
Okay.
That Exhibit A is the spreadsheet.
Okay. So, that, I'm very familiar with spreadsheet. So, that, that ties to the resolution or to the MOU?
To both.
To both, but it is part of the, it's part of the motion that is being made includes Exhibit A also.
I think it should be interpreted that way, because as part of the agenda packet we have is the same as that was presented to the trustees. For the trustees, we had George Wood's memorandum, which he read, and he read to this board a couple of weeks ago, also the spreadsheet and the PFA information. That spreadsheet and PFA information are here.
So, we just need to make sure that that is referenced in the minutes, that that Exhibit A is part of those two documents. Is that correct?
I think so.
Okay.
So, I, I, there's a motion and a second to approve. I've heard some commissioners advocate for taking some additional time, so I think that's probably the process question that we need to resolve first, is whether majority of the board wishes to act on this tonight, or whether to take some additional time before we vote on this, so.
I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to speak to that. I think there's, we're gonna afterwards, and I don't care to make that, this, the, depending on how this goes, I don't care to make the motion that it goes to the legislature.
I'm sorry, you, what?
I don't care, I mean, I, I don't have a problem making the motion that it goes to the legislature after, wherever this ends up, because I think it, that has to be done after we see where this lands, correct?
I think so.
Okay, so.
So, with someone who is an advocate for taking some additional time, would someone like to make a motion to, I think the appropriate thing would be to make a motion to defer consideration of this to a future meeting? And if that passes, then we would, we would?
You have to act on the first.
I'm seeing that the board should act on Mr. Friar's motion first.
So, act on that, and then if we wanted to defer, there could be a motion to defer it?
If that was the next motion.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, well, we'll do that, so.
It has to fail before you can make?
This motion fails, then we can discuss timing for reconsideration of it.
So, a comment regarding that? Chairman, is that okay?
Go ahead, yep.
What I was, what I was saying is that if we have, send this to the legislature, that, you know, I believe that there will be some discussion, additional discussion, as you brought up, the commission and, and some other ways of, of moving forward and making sure our cooperation is, is, is at the best level it could possibly be. I think that that will provide some window there, that some, that might be helpful, so.
Okay. Well, I, you know, I'm an advocate for taking more time on this personally. This is a very important issue. We're talking about a lot of money, and so I personally think taking some additional time, I think we're gonna, we're already having a good discussion, you know, this will continue tonight. I would be more comfortable waiting to vote on this, you know, for at least a little more time to, I mean, I'd like to see the plan. I mean, we're talking about spending thirty million dollars on a plan I haven't seen, so I'm, I'm certainly not comfortable with that. But I do want to propose a couple of amendments to the motion, because if it is gonna pass, I'd like to try to get a couple of things in, into it. One is, I would like to propose that we create a commission, a joint commission between Buncombe County and AB Tech, to collaborate on how these funds, however much they may be, will be invested in the future, because I think we've, the relations, the working relationship between the bodies has not been the way it should be. And we, and this would be, and this is just, we've done this with other schools, and it's worked really well, so I just think we don't need to, we don't need to reinvent the wheel.
It would be an amendment.
So, so this would be an amendment to the motion, to the MOU, that we add to the MOU, a provision that calls for the creation of a, a joint capital commission between Buncombe County and AB Tech, which would include, and I'm open to, you know, thinking about the details of this, but just to get something on the, on the table, using the model from the school commission, we'd have two members appointed by the county commission, two members appointed by the AB Tech Board of Trustees. Those four would appoint an additional community member. This board would not have direct decision-making authority, but would make recommendations based on the plans developed by AB Tech, input from county staff, would make recommendations on allocations of available funding from Article forty-six, and the, and the commission would need to approve those recommendations, just as we do with the Buncombe County School System and the Asheville City School System. So, that's, that's an amendment I would propose.
Commissioner Newman?
Let me, let me ask if there's a second first, and then we'll discuss.
Second?
Okay. Yes, sir.
Article forty-six is not like Article thirty-six, or forty-two, or whatever, Buncombe County. The state determined that money had to go where it's going. Period. It has nowhere else to go, except into the school system, city, and county, period. That, and we're about the only county that has that, but how are you gonna take, as you put in your article in the paper, that you thought the money could be used in other areas, that we need to use it in? Now, you changed your mind a little bit, but Article forty-six money is for all the commissioners from after we're gone, to be able to determine what they would like to do with it. That's the way it was laid out. As, it's, Article forty-six money is just Buncombe County quarter cent sales tax that is put there. There's another quarter cent left, where it could ever be put, I don't know. So, I am not supportive of that, because that's backing into something that we honestly can't do, the state can't do it. You know, they can do it for the eight years, but they can't lock it down, period. So, that's, if you want to do that for the eight years that we're tying into this, that'll be fine. But how can you do it? This money is not state mandated, one and a half cent out of the seven cents that has to go to the county schools and city schools, period. It's a good idea, Brownie, but I don't, I don't see how it can work, because then you're tying other county commissioners, once I'm gone, you're gone, Robert, everybody else on this board's gone, that, they don't have to fulfill that, period. So, there's a motion to do something to help this school. We don't need to control them. Yeah, we had three people in the room. AB Tech had three people in the room. We had Greg Israel in the room, we had the president in the room, we had Mandy Ben in the room, then, you know, George went in the room. I don't see what it would benefit, that I want AB Tech to be involved in it, and they know it, and it's tied into this already. You know, that nineteen million dollars can be spent during that process. It's just, it has to be determined, determined between the two groups, and I'm a hundred percent for that, that we don't need to make the total decision on it. AB Tech has a decision that they can make on it, and I'm, I'm happy with that. But, we've put enough effort into this, and it is a lot of money. And I'm a hundred percent for a lot of money, but I put the numbers up there. So, we took away all the threat of not having the money, and hopefully we have more at the end of it. I hope it's twenty-five million dollars, but I, you know, and it don't need to stay there in fund balance. There's room to move it if they need it. As Dennis said, he may need a school, or they, he probably won't be there, but they may need another building. Let's don't try to control everything, period, and that's exactly what we're trying to do.
Far, far, far from it. This, this is not about controlling it. This is about creating a consistent, transparent process for allocation of these tax dollars. We need for AB Tech to have a very predictable and consistent way for, for however much additional money is available, generated by the sales tax. They need a way to talk to the county about how those funds are gonna be approved. I mean, the process we've had, had in the past, has been the county manager, you know, taking, you know, doing what she, she thought was the right decision to make, and, but we've never had a, a, a place where the public can know what's going on, and AB Tech can have a way to engage with our Board of Commissioners in an open and consistent way to talk about future programming of these funds, and that is, that is what we need. And, and they would have equal seating at the table for that subcommittee to, to discuss this.
They have had equal seating at the table.
Well, the meetings that have been held have, have not been public. Frankly, they have violated the open meeting laws of the state, and it can, that is not the right way to do this going forward. It's gotta change, and that's what this proposal's about.
Okay, so.
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm sitting here, I've been quiet, and I've gone over this, this past weekend a lot. I've read what Don has sent me, and what everybody's sent me, and when you talk about coming into the first meeting, first meeting I had, we were talking about a twenty-seven million dollar building that we'd passed on a consent agenda, and that just blew my mind, you know? I'd never heard of that. I'd served on two university boards. But, we need to bring this mess, and that's where it is. We need to get a solution. It's not fair to the school, to our community college. And I can tell you from being on the EDC board, representing us, the commission, that talking to all the new businesses coming in here, first thing they bring up is the community college and what they're doing. I want to support this deal tonight, for us to move it along, but the only way I'm gonna support it is that I agree with Brownie. We need a commission like the school, because so that Buncombe Tech will be protected. We need them to sit at the table, and more important than that, the other ones have got to tell us when they need a building. And it gives us checks and balances and transparency, so we don't have the mess, we're not having what we're trying to correct now to happen again. And unfortunately, this whole referendum was not set up right from the beginning, as far as I'm concerned. We should have done, it, it was just not right. It was set up to be a train wreck, and this is what we're trying to do now, is get it back on the track. But, like I said, I can vote for what we've done, but we've got to have Brownie's amendment.
Well, let me, let me comment to that, because I, I don't agree with everything in Brownie's amendment. Yeah, I, that's my problem, okay? And, well, and I'll, I'll get to that, but I don't agree with it. It was not, I guess this is the first time that it's been discussed. Okay, so, I do serve on that, on that school board commission. I do like the way that functions. However, I do not think that we can structure what that commission looks like. In, your motion includes how many people's gonna be on it, all of that. I would support that we, we explore the, the, the possibility, and I would support it, of, of having some sort of commission. But what we're doing by going ahead and structuring it, you're leaving the people out in the room that are from AB Tech. We need their input into what that commission looks like. So, I would support that we structure something similar to what we have in the other school commission. I will not support what that looks like tonight, because I feel like we need the, the input from, from AB Tech, from their board, and what they think the structure is. And I think if we'll do that, maybe even we do that during the time that we're going to the, to the legislature, which is kind of where my mind went when you brought up the commission earlier. That's kind of where, when I started talking about, you know, if this goes through, what happens next about approaching the, you know, the legislature?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just before we make a motion more complicated than it's, it might become, I think we're talking about a couple things. So, I think the board has to remember, first, when we're looking at the Article forty-six sales tax and its use, that is designed by legislature as an additional source of revenue to be spent in the discretion of this board and this board only. So, this board can't bind itself for this year, for this month, or for any time, or the future board, as the use, the discretionary use of those funds. So, it seems that, to me, that what you're talking about here is, if, if the board goes along with the chairman's proposal, then we need to back up to what College Attorney and I discussed, the easiest way to accomplish the mutual goals of the trustees in this board is through an MOU mutually agreed to, to become law. So, when I read the section, paragraph of Section Five, where So when I read the section, paragraph of section five where the, uh, the proposed MOU, the board trustees and the commissioners, uh, will work together to identify what needs to be done. And if they jointly agree, then we'd make that expense. I think what you're describing is we would need to redraft that five in some mutually agreeable manner such that this board would agree and send it back to the college trustees or vice versa, such that they both have one agreement, and then that goes to the legislature.
That's right. That, I think that's, that's about right. Um, absolutely, Commissioner Belcher, you know, the, what I'm proposing here, if there's a majority of our board that supports the idea, I mean, this would be contingent upon the AB Tech trustees agreeing this is helpful. We, we, we have to both be in agreement or we don't have an MOU. So this is kinda proposing a, a change to the MOU so it would go back to their, uh, their board for consideration. And if, you know, and if they think it's not helpful, then, then, um, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't go into effect. So we have to, we'd have to be on the same page, but, and I'm certainly, I certainly welcome input from the AB Tech trustees about the best way to do it. I'd certainly be happy to say this is, um, you know, this is a, this is a, this is an idea for how it could be structured. And if they concur, it's a good structure, we go with that, but I'd certainly welcome their, their input on it. But I think we should probably propose something just to, you know, kinda move the conversation along.
Well, I mean, I don't, and, you know, and sometimes I'll come into meeting, I have a thought, and, you know, and so this is not directed as if it's anything, anything wrong, but obviously you've thought through that, and that may be something, I mean, you've thought through maybe the structure.
Well, just as I said, we have that, we have that exact structure already specifically for allocation of capital funds for schools. So it's just, and it's worked well, so it's, I didn't, I didn't come up with that idea. I'm just saying, we already have it in a good model in the community and would propose using it for these facilities.
My only concern is that I don't want us writing that. I would like to have input from, from, from AB Tech. So I would be willing to support the, um, um, the motion to include the, um, exploration of that model with them. And I would, I mean, I serve on that commission now. I would be supportive of that. I, you know, I just don't think we need to be direct in the, so that's current, that's exactly the structure of the School Capital Commission right now.
Correct. So how about this? If the motion were to say that we have this joint commission, the commission proposes for consideration this structure, but welcomes feedback from AB Tech's trustees on the specific structure. So we'll, we'll just kinda put it out there, but we want their feedback on it. It's not a take it or leave it, it's this structure or, or no joint committee.
If it says that this is the current structure of the School Capital Fund Commission, and, um, that is the, the recommendation, but we, we welcome AB Tech's. Can we, can we write it that way, Michael? Can we write it that way?
Yeah, we, we could decide something.
So you wanna take a shot at redoing your?
I think that, let me re-summarize the motion. The motion is to propose the creation of a joint commission between Buncombe County and AB Tech Board Trustees as an advisory body for, um, additional capital investments in AB Tech facilities. We propose for consideration the model from the School Capital Commission used with the city and county schools, which is a fi- a five-member board, two appointed by the county, two appointed by the schools, and one additional community member. But we welcome their input on that, and if there's additional ideas for, uh, representation from each body, we're, we welcome dialogue on, dialogue on that point.
Cause I, I would expect them to say that we would like to have, you know, I would expect them to provide input back to us on that. And so I, um, I would, I would, I would support that to move, to move this along tonight.
Okay. So that's the motion. Is that acceptable to you, Jasmine? And you said you made the second?
It is, yes. I, I just will briefly say I continue to think from a process perspective would be well-served by incorp, by taking the time to do some additional dialogue before we bring it back to a vote and doing that in a thoughtful, careful way that sort of incorporates this process. This is just such an important relationship. It's such a lot of money. And I would rather, so, so I continue to feel that this process would be best served by kind of methodically moving forward. And so that's where I'm at.
All right. There's a motion and second further comments on the motion to amend that we've just been discussing. Okay, all in favor of the proposed amendment to the original motion, which would create a joint commission between the AB Tech trustees and Buncombe County? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay. All right, so that passes six to one. Are there further comments on the original motion as now amended?
I'm still really struggling to support this, much for the same reasons that I've previously stated. I wholeheartedly support some type of joint commission to work towards this and ensuring that the right folks at Buncombe County, the commissioners, and the right folks at AB Tech are at the table to ensure that they truly have input into the projects that Article forty-six is going to fund. Their voices must be heard and the right voices at the table to be heard. This is the first time we've had this discussion as a body. And I think to spend maybe an hour, hour and a half at this point on it is simply not long enough. I think we really need to be thoughtful and thorough to ensure that we are doing the right thing by Buncombe County taxpayers and AB Tech Community College.
And Mr. Chair?
Not to say that this is a bad proposal. I think we need to dig a little deeper before we make a final decision.
I just wanted to point out to the chair and the board that I, I really viewed that last motion to amend as changing the entire purpose of the original motion such that I was reading it as a motion to deny this resolution, but send a proposal back.
No.
No?
I, I view it as an amendment to the MOU. I, I thought of it as, as an, as an additional, an amendment to the MOU. So it would be an additional provision in the MOU going into some more detail, talking about how, as you mentioned, you know, how we together decide, make future recommendations and decisions on funding. So I don't see it as
I just wanna make sure everyone was on the same
Okay, that's, that's
So, and that, that was my understanding is that we were approving, the MOU, we're approving the resolution, we're approving Exhibit A. We're just adding, we're just adding the commission. That's it.
Do we come back here or to the trustees next?
Pardon me? No, we just
Uh, hang on, let's do, let's do one at a time.
Hold, hold, Mr. Brownie, one second here. I thought this was killing the
No, it's not.
Okay. Not ki, no, no. It's mov, it was moving in a different direction. I will move my vote to a yes.
Okay.
It'll be seven o'clock.
Okay. All right. We'll record it at seven o'clock. All right. So that was an amendment to the original motion. So the mo, the original motion's still on the table now as amended to, if it passes, there's this idea of a joint commission included within the MOU.
Yes.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second on that.
There is a motion and second, yes.
Okay.
Further discussion on the motion. There's no others. I'm just gonna comment that I'm, I'm gonna vote against it. I just, I just, I just don't feel like we have the information we need to make a, make an informed decision. I mean, again, we're talking about thirty million dollars. I've seen a two-page plan with bullet points, and that's just, that's just not, that's just not good enough.
You know, Brownie?
Yeah.
I'm glad you said that.
Yeah.
Because the shoe's on the other foot now. For four of the last six meetings we've had, I have asked for us to take time to think about it. And I'm looked at like, uh, it's four to three. We've got, now you and a couple other are asking for time. Let's be fair. You know, I agree. We never are gonna make a hundred percent the right direction. But it is amazing to me of whenever our chairman and others, and there's seven of us, we each got one vote apiece. Nobody's got one and a half. That when we ask for something, we ought to have the consideration to go on. But that right there is what probably upsets me more than anything is whenever we know we're outvoted and we ask for time to get more information, we're denied very quick. We have prolonged this for thirty-five minutes when we should have been voting earlier.
I'd like to respond to that. I, I hear you. I mean, delay can be a tactic. We all know that. Our Congress hasn't passed anything in years, I think, at this point. But to me, this is different. This is the first time, let me explain. There's no, there's no external deadline on this. Some of the other things that have come before us, there've been external forces where a decision was required. Or, and on major initiatives, we have typically taken more than one meeting to do an informational session with some sort of time to metabolize and digest it in between and have discussion before it comes back to the vote. We did that with the Early Childhood Education Fund. We did that with Mountain Housing over two meetings with, with their
Chair, chairman, chairman? Let her, let her finish and then you can respond.
We did, actually. There was a presentation with time for discussion, and then it came back for a vote. So that's, where I'm coming from is I think that when there's, uh, when I, when the, something has enough significance, there's, it's a large enough dollar amount, there's enough at stake or it's complicated enough. I, I, I think we and the community are better served by a process that includes public discussion where we can disagree. It can be robust. We can ask for more information. We can put ideas on the table and then have an opportunity to come back and bring it to a vote. Now, y'all, you may totally disagree with that, but I, I think that what we produce is better served by taking the time to do that. And I've seen that true, I think, across a number of different initiatives. So I, I respectfully push back there that this is about politics and more that it's about. This is really important, and from the time we, several of us arrived on commission, we have not, it has not been done right yet.
So now's the night to fix it.
Well, if, if, and I think this proposal gets us a lot closer to fixing it than anything else I've seen. But, and I think with some additional discussion deliberation, um, it could be strengthened even more. That's, that's where I'm coming down. We can, I don't, I don't need to beat a dead horse with it.
Yes, I'm gonna call the question, chairman, because I think the discussion currently is not, is not relative to the motion. So I'd like to call a question for the vote.
Are there any other commissioners who want to comment before we vote? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All against, aye.
Aye.
Passes four to three. All right. Thank you all for being with us tonight. We're interested in this issue. All right, we're moving on to the next item. Unless there's anything else on this item, is there anything else on the AB Tech issue?
I'm just glad it's over. Yeah.
Well, the, the, just to prompt people's memory on this, there was discussion about going to the legislative delegation.
Right.
So is there
Yeah, how do we need to do that?
I have talked to, I've already talked to them.
Well, how do we need to do it procedurally?
I think we need to get some language together for the amendment to the MOU as described by this board. Get it to the AB Tech board, get it ratified by both, and then get it to the General Assembly. I think that both boards still need to ratify the final, final language of the MOU.
So I agree, probably need to finalize that. I think, I think the legislators are following this closely. I think they'll, it's gonna, the ball's gonna be in their court about if they wanna take action on this. Has been passed by both bodies, but both on a split vote. You know, we're far from a consensus on some of this, so whether they want to take this up will be
We've already voted, chairman. You don't have to sell your position no more.
Will be their, it'll be their decision. The ball's gonna be in their court if they want it. So is there anything else on this, or are people, have nothing else to say?
Do we need to do a motion on that or not?
That's what I'm asking.
Craft the language?
That's what I'm asking.
I'm looking at it that way.
I, I, I think it's done. We'll just bring it back as soon as we can.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, chairman. Good discussion.
Okay, next up, we have the FY 2019 budget amendment summary.
Good evening again. So we have seven budget amendment requests before us this evening.
All right.
So we do this every meeting. So, um, you would like to vote on them? How? In order to, do you wanna take public comment?
Uh, here's what I'd like to do. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on any of the proposed budget amendments on the agenda? Okay, there's not, so I think we've offered that opportunity, so please proceed.
So we'll move through them. So referencing the budget amendment summary, the budget amendment number one for the general fund does correlate to budget amendment number two in the capital projects fund. So during some of our fiscal year 2020 budget planning process for our capital improvement plan, planning, it was discovered that the North Carolina Room of the PAC Library is without an existing fire suppression system. So obviously, this does jeopardize any of the contents of that room. More so than, I guess, the remainder of the library, Jim.
Just to clarify, it does have a fire suppression system. It's water. And what we want to replace it with is a, uh, chemical fire suppression system so it doesn't destroy or damage the archival information in the North Carolina Room.
So it does have a water sprinkler system, but it would be damaging to books if used.
Yes. It, yeah, particularly in the North Carolina Room where there are historical documents.
So the request is to utilize, um, general government budgetary contingency dollars in order to fund that particular project. So we would request that the budgetary contingency be established as a transfer from the general fund to the capital projects fund for the PAC Library Fire Suppression System in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars.
Okay. So I have one question. Just again, this is not a public safety enhancement. This is to preserve historic documents and other, other documents held in that room. So I guess my question is, you know, it sounds like a worthy project. It is a quarter of a million dollars. You know, we're entering the budget process. I mean, to me, this is, it kinda feels a little bit more like something that should be considered alongside other, you know, where, where there's always more great projects than we have funds for in the, in the budget. This is not in any current plan. I guess, I don't know, I'm kind of more inclined to suggest we put this in the budget process for this, for this year. I mean, again, I think it sounds like a, a very, very good project. But just from a process standpoint is, what's the right place to make that decision? If I'm alone in this, I'm happy for someone else to, does anybody wanna, um, comment on that or make a motion?
Is this in the North Carolina Room?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I follow that, yeah. The problem is, if we have a fire, that's gonna destroy documents. They can't be replaced, right?
Yes, potentially. That's abso- absolutely correct. The North Carolina Room, the North Carolina Room is not just, uh, it, it's distinct from the regular library where there are books that people can check out. It is containing, uh, historical information, many of which are, uh, documents that are, that if they were destroyed either by fire or by water, would be irreplaceable. And that was the urgency that was placed on that. When we were made aware of that, we did include it in the capital, uh, budget process. After further discussion, the, uh, recommendation was to move forward from a safety, from a preservation perspective at this point, but that's, you know, it's pleasure of the board.
Cause they even have documents, don't they, that families have will to the library? And I know they have, it's unreal what they have in there when it comes to the African-American history in the community, and I'd hate to see that lost.
Well, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars versus two-point-two million two weeks ago. Seems like somebody changes their mind pretty quick. I'm for the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Does someone wanna make a motion on this? Does someone wanna make a, would you wanna make that into a motion?
I'll so move.
Okay. And this is for items one and two?
Yes, yes.
All right, there's a motion for items one and two. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. Okay, next.
All right, so for item number three, it's a general fund requested budget amendment. This is related to, um, the approval by this board on February Um, this is related to, um, the approval by this board on February the fifth to increase the EMS paramedics, um, by four positions. Um, this creates the technical budget amendment for us to be able to budget on the salary and benefits based on that approval.
Which we discussed and approved at the last meeting.
You did. And so this would, this is again authorizing the use of budgetary contingency in your current appropriated, um, fiscal year 2019 budget for that purpose.
Can I ask just another kind of a process question? Is there any way to do this when we just, you know, look, we had this great discussion about this last week and, you know, we approved this. Is there any way to do this when we do it so that we're not kind of doing it? I mean, this doesn't usually take too much time since we have already covered it, but is there any way to just do it at the same time so you just sort of get it all done when you're focused on the substance of it?
So that certainly is a matter of preference. Um, Mr. Wood, uh, his preference is to, um, go before the board to request that and then follow it based on your approval or nonapproval.
Okay.
But we can certainly, in the future, prepare that.
It could be done.
You can be, you can plan for that.
Well, maybe just a, maybe something to think about, um, going forward.
We probably should, yeah.
Um, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Okay, great. Um, so budget amendment number four and five are related. Number four, um, this is to budget the anticipated award from the Buncombe County Tourism Development Authority in the amount of $6 million for the improvements to the Buncombe County Sports Park, the Bob Lewis Ball Park, and to assist in the creation of the Inca Heritage Trail. So this allows us to budget the anticipated revenue from the $6 million award in addition to budgeting, um, $4,800,000 in anticipated revenue in federal grants for the same project. In addition to, um, budgeting the full $1,200,000 amount that would, is the county match for that award over the course of, I do believe it's three fiscal years. What I will say is that the budget amendment number four, we have already in fiscal year 2019 established $400,000 of that 1.2 million. So budget amendment four allows us to then transfer that existing $400,000 to the grants fund as part of the $1.2 million requested budget.
So I'll gladly make a motion to support and approve, uh, that.
All right, there's a motion in a second to approve items four and five. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
So budget amendments number six and seven are related. Um, at the June 19th, 2018, um, budget adoption meeting, there was the approval for, um, a project for Mitel phone system upgrade um, on behalf of IT. That original approved amount was $95,204. Um, the quote has been received from the vendor requiring an additional $27,752. Information Technology has identified that dollar amount in their current operating budget. We're requesting to be able to transfer that amount from their operating budget to be paired with the already existing dollars in the, um, capital projects fund to be able to fully, um, budget for that total contract amount.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you so much.
That's all, thank you.
All right, we now come to, um, board appointments. And first is a reappointment of, uh, Riverfront Redevelopment Commissioner Christie Quinn. I move approval.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, under Economic Development Coalition. Uh, we've got two people with one reappointment.
So I'm confused.
Yeah, why, are they both on the board now? Does anybody know? Uh, Al, do you know, are they both on? Or?
You should say on the-
You got it.
You should say on that. There it is. Okay, so I'm gonna recommend Mark Malloy. That is the reappointment.
He's the reappointment, right.
Yes, I'll make a motion for Mark Malloy as the, uh, reappointment.
Okay.
I don't think we have anything else.
I will second the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and now public comment.
I got one more.
I'm sorry, do you? There's only one position. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, thank you very much.
That's how I read it anyway.
You're correct.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you for catching that. Is there a motion to also appoint, uh, Jael Ratigan?
So move.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, and we've got, um-
Got to do the subcommittee.
All right. So on the county boards and commissions, um, I, so there's one from each district. I make a motion to approve Joe Belcher, Brownie Newman, and Amanda Edwards.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, I, so Jasmine is, um, stepping down from the NPO. I make a motion to appoint Amanda Edwards.
Second.
Uh, can I, can I make a comment on that? I don't want to, I don't want to, was, um, was Robert the alternate?
I was just alternate.
He's the alternate, yeah.
So I, I think we probably should ask Robert if he wants to be considered, um, for that. Cause you're the, uh-
I would say the alternate, if possible.
We could do that.
It does have a couple conflicts with other, uh-
Do you want to change it to, so we make sure we tag him?
And to keep Robert Presley as the alternate.
Okay.
Yep. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we still have the Land of Sky Council position open and Crime Stoppers. So anybody, are we gonna just keep talking about this?
I guess so.
What does Crime Stoppers do?
How, yeah.
Brownie, did we need to make an appointment to the sports commission?
We-
It's not on here.
It's not on here, but we do. So, um-
Well-
What's, remind, refresh our memory around, the sports commission would like to have a commissioner-
Yes.
On it.
I would be glad to serve on it.
Okay. Is there, is, or is it a new position or is there a vacancy that would be filled by a commissioner? Or what's the status of the commission now in terms of-
So there had been a commissioner representative for a number of years and over the last few, there have not, um-
That was Carol.
Carol Peterson did it, yes. It had been Carol Peterson when she was serving as a commissioner. Mr. O'Connor from Parks and Rec has been serving until they, they wanted a commissioner to serve.
Okay, well, I tell you what, thank you for flagging it. Let's put that on the list and at our next commission meeting, we'll appoint, we'll appoint that. So-
No, I would, I would let the board know that I would be happy to serve on that because I go to, I mean, because I'm on the TDA, I'm at, I'm at a lot of those meetings anyhow-
Okay.
That are around that, so.
All right.
Just for the record.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, now we come to public comment. Are there any members of, yes, sir?
The Land of the Sky.
Yeah.
I mean, myself and Amanda had talked. Have you thought about that anymore, Amanda?
Well, considering that, I need to take a look at the NPO and when that meets now. Um, I would like to defer that conversation if possible.
I think it meets the fourth Wednesday. Um, over in the right column, Lamar put the meeting dates on there, so. Uh, but the, in, the French, the French part of the NPO meets-
It's the fourth Thursday at 1:00 PM?
I think it is on Thursdays.
It's Thursday's at 1:00 PM. But I'm not certain it's the fourth Thursday, I shouldn't know.
Can we turn on that before our march of the meeting?
Yes.
Please.
Okay. Anybody else on any of these others? Okay, we'll keep thinking about it. All right, we got a few filled, that's good. That's progress. Um, all right, we come to public comment. Are there any members of the, uh, public who would like to comment? And you have three minutes. And so please just share your name and where you live. And, um, thank you for being here.
Christine Collings, Candler. Thank you for listening. My property is approximately one mile from West Asheville and three, R3 zoning. I was happy at my property for the first three years. Then in 2016, a business developer couple bought almost four acre property that sits further down from my private driveway. My driveway, Lefler Lane, offers their property access. Without notice or intro- introduction, and while I was out of town, they dug through 300 feet of driveway on my property to increase the size of their water line and water meter. They put the road back together in a way that the water drained towards my structures and then they reduced the ditch capacity. The ditch capacity is important because three acres of uphill watershed come into my driveway. The man in the business developer couple has many years' experience in operations and earthmoving equipment, yet he fails to acknowledge and act upon the drainage issues caused by his leaking water meter box. During one of the times I talked with them, he said he wanted to buy my property. He already owns three investment properties in the area, appraised at over a million dollars. He collects a lot of rent money. Owning my property could allow him to widen the substandard one lane gravel, gravel driveway that his business tenants complain about. The right of way is grandfathered in at 12 feet for driveway and ditch. His group home tenants complain of how hard it would be for an ambulance or fire truck to get through the narrow opening. Why didn't they think of this before renting there? What I hope to accomplish tonight is telling you of the struggle of development versus how it affects some residents when there is not appropriate regulations or infrastructure available. A business developer can see loopholes and plow through with their money and lawyers trying to intimidate. I have this binder full of correspondence with the business developers lawyers from speeding, noise, maintenance, property damage, and trespassing issues that I have with them, including a big erosion problem from their leaky water meter, to a demand letter and threat of defamation lawsuit at me. My life now consists of protecting and defending my rights on an almost weekly basis. The defamation lawsuit threat is because I gave them a news release that reported details of their leaky water meter box and all the trouble it caused. I said I would give it to the Asheville mayor, which I have, and now the commissioners. Next I might go to the media. The leaky meter issue has been going on for years and I gave them a deadline to fix it or I would publicize. I don't have the money to match their lawyers in court, but I do have, uh, a licensed civil engineer, Tom Bailey, who will def- detail their erosion issues. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Tom Bailey, also Candler. I'm a licensed engineer, civil engineer in the state of North Carolina. And I've been helping Ms. Collings with her drainage issues on her property since she bought it in 2013. So what's happened is that we've realized how important her driveway, Lefler Lane, private driveway, which also has access to two neighbors in the back, is to the drainage and protection of her home. So this developer put in a new water meter, a new water meter box, and a new water line. This has caused a lot of problems. It seems like there's always water standing in that meter box. This problem really came to our attention in June of 2017, bright sunny day. And the Anchor Candler Fire Department came out and as they do from time to time, which is a good thing, they opened up the hydrant and blew it out. Water came down Lefler Lane. We constructed some drainage turnouts to direct all that water to the ditch, excuse me. We saw the water come down Lefler Lane into the ditch and go down the ditch. Lefler Lane is paved for the first 30 feet and it's gravel. Well, we were looking at Lefler Lane and water was coming out of the gravel, not in the ditch, in the lane. It was right on top of that water main, the two-inch main that they put in. We immediately called up the owner, the developer. He said, "I'll think about it." Nothing happened. January of 2018, we had saturated water conditions under Lefler Lane. All the traffic from the group home that's at the back, that the developer owns, going back and forth created a great big four-inch rut in Lefler Lane, a big mound of dirt between Lefler Lane and the ditch. Unfortunately, somebody ordered a load of gravel. Dump truck came in there. What did they do? They drove right down that mud and squished it into the ditch. Nothing happened. So we saw rain coming. I guess my time's up. I've got 30 seconds, 30 seconds. We dug it out. Developer didn't want to pay anything like that. Fortunately, the city of Asheville Water Department has come out and identified a leak. But we are wondering, what can we do when the lawyer of the developer says, "There's no leak there." We've had water come out, water people come out several times. Leak? There's no leak. What's our recourse with these developers? That's our question. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Yes.
I was looking back and it shows that you were appointed supposedly back to the board downstairs on the 15th of last month, January. I don't remember having a vote on that. And for the minutes, I'd love to see them because I don't remember voting to put you back on that board.
Um, I think we did. It's my memory, but we can check the minutes. We can check the minutes.
Because that was the long night that we had and then I said, "Let's just go back and we'll do this later."
I think, I, I, the Energy Innovation Task Force, I think, I think Al made the motion to do it. I think other people talked about being interested in going to some of the meetings and I invited those members to the last meeting. So I, I do remember us voting for it, actually. So, does anybody else have any comments on that?
I, I, I think I do too, but why don't we just check that? I mean, we're not, we're not able to do that tonight, why don't we? Just check it out.
We'll check the, have you checked the minutes?
I have not, I just made a note to do something.
All right, we'll check the minutes. All right.
I remember I said I would like to send in.
And I invited you to the last meeting, didn't I?
I remember that, but I said we don't need a vote.
Okay. All right. Well, the minutes are what rules. So we'll, we'll, we'll check, we'll check it out. Okay. All right. Um, we do, let me make a couple of quick announcements. Uh, the county commissioners' next regular meeting will be on March 5th at 5:00 PM. However, at 4:30 PM, we will have a special meeting to swear in Avril Pender as the new county manager. So the public is, uh, welcome to attend that, uh, followed by our regular meeting at 5:00 PM. And then our next regular meeting will be at 5:00 PM on March 19th. Uh, we do have a need for a closed session. Mr. Frew, could you talk about the purpose of it?
Uh, yes, sir.